Talk about things and to do what we feel is best for the city. We love the feedback that we get and we just pray it's, everybody conducts himself in an orderly manner. Well, we just pray for our country, always just so much going on. We just pray for unity. Pray for our time together tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, Adam, is there any changes to the agenda tonight?
I don't have any changes.
All right, here none. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
So move.
Motion by Mayor Tannen. Second by Billy Barnesfield. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you. And has everybody had a chance to read the minutes from the October meeting last month? Are there any changes that need to be made? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from October? I have Judy Wheeler's approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gilmore. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. As always, we have a public forum which we invite the people here in the audience to come and address the board if you'd like. If you would like to do that, come to the microphone there and state your name and your address. And if you do, we ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. Is anybody wishing to address the board tonight? Everybody shy, huh? Okay. Do I have a motion to close the public forum? Mr. Barnesfield makes a motion to close? Second? Second by Mr. Parnell. Those in favor say aye. Aye. Public forum is closed. We're now ready for item number four. 301 Moss Trail. Property owner requests approval to alter the property lines of the two properties, including 2.18 acres at 301 Moss Trail at the intersection of Moss Trail and Pleasant Green Road. Adam? Does anybody here represent that property? If you'll come up here, we're going to turn it over to Adam then we'll let you chime in after that.
Just say your name and address.
Yeah, I'm Mark Sagudis, 301 Moss Trail, Goodlettsville. And I'm the owner of the property at 301 Moss Trail, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, kind of a unique request for us. Currently you see lot 68 here, I'm sorry, it's a 2.1 acre tract at the corner of Moss, Pleasant Green. 1.27 is the old lot 68, Goodlettsville Heights. Then it was actually another .92 of an adjacent property here. So it's been put together, the house was built in the 50s, so these have been two separate tracts, but shown as one parcels for a long time now. The proposal is to be able to alter the two lots. Like I said, there's two properties now. The goal is to alter the two lots and create a new lot that's buildable for a new house. Because right now the lot line cuts the existing house, basically the house that's right on the property line. So the goal will be to create a new lot here. Basically you'd flip it, the new lot would come .9 acres and then the back area basically become the remaining, which is roughly flipped 1.26, 1.27 acres. The goal would be to build a house in this location. I'll show you the drawing. The property they're proposing is 260 feet deep, so right now that's roughly 330. So the property line would come to that green tree about right here. They're proposing. The house, my understanding, would be about 75 to 80 feet off Moss Trail. What we did with this, our subdivision regulations, the goal was to not alter the average lot size and development with these reworking the lots. So I went through Goodlettsville Heights, section two. There's 69 lots and it's 61.45 acres, so averaging 38,760 square feet per lot is when I did Goodlettsville Heights, section two. Now, Goodlettsville Heights, like I said, these were from the 50s. There's been a lot of changes over time. So I tried to be the most accurate current of the alteration. There were seven or eight lots that have changed since then. And the Pleasant Green Road lots, they were never planted, they were just deeded properties. You can see they were about 3.49 acres over five themselves. So it was .7 on those five Pleasant Green lots there. So his proposal is to create, like I said, a new lot, roughly 39,200 square feet, .9 acres. So it's within our subdivision regulations to meet the average requirement. It's just a house plan he submitted. We see what his proposal is. I let him kind of explain that. Roughly close to a 3,000 square foot brick home. So he's wanting to build that with a multiple car garage on it. Subdivision regulations, it talks about limitation on resubdivision. Of course, this is a little unique in that it's two properties now. It's kind of more of an alteration of the lots versus he's trying to create a new, you know, a new property itself. Basically what the subdivision regulation says, any existing subdivision has been approved, recorded, and developed. No resubdivision, replating shall be permitted which reduces the average lot size in such recorded subdivision. You can see his proposal would meet that, that basically consistent with the average lot size. The zoning ordinance has a different section. And it talks about, you can re-subdivide it based on the zoning meeting, whatever the zoning, the district is. This is R-25. So his proposal for .9 acres would meet the R-25 requirement because that's roughly .57 acre lot, 25,000 square foot. And he would meet the setback requirements for the new house and from the distance from the old house to the property line. Staff stipulation, we kind of did this a little different. I wanted to bring it up to the planning commission tonight. If you all feel comfortable with it and approve it, then he would come through me to do a two lot subdivision. I wanted you all first to see it because I know there's been some concern about how we handle existing lots and subdivisions for several years now. So motion options, when we could approve the proposed lot, track alterations with the staff stipulation. Per determination by the planning commission, the proposal meets our subdivision regulations and zoning ordinance. Be my recommendation. You can make a motion to deny the proposed lot alterations per determination by this board that the proposal does not meet our city subdivision regulations, zoning ordinance. Or you could defer request to include additional information as determined by this board.
Okay, so you have anything to add?
Yeah, I mean this, once we met, meeting with Adam and we're kind of talking through everything, it really, it makes sense to move that lot line to 40 feet back toward there, one to go back to the original, more the two lots. I mean, it's very conforming to what you expect as far as a lot size for the lot. And also to be able to build a house which is going to have like a 70 to 75 foot setback from Moss Trail, but a 37 foot side from, on the north side and from Pleasant Green, about 45 feet. So it's going to have ample size around the lot and the house and the new house, which he says it's a four bedroom, three car garage house with a nice entry and everything. Very conforming with, you know, brick exterior. It would look very good for the neighborhood, one story. And I've actually built this type of home about 30 times. So it'll be a very beautiful home. It's like one of the preferred type of houses that we had different, we had different models. And this is like the most popular model and it's really got a lot of good attributes. So I think it's going to be very good and it'll definitely appreciate the neighborhood. The neighborhood will love it. So I just hope that you get an approval. Thank you.
So 75 would roughly be, these, like I think the existing house I measured, some of them around 100, 110. I think this one's 120. So the house would be roughly about right here.
Yeah, just one last thing to add. So in the driveway, you know, Moss Trail and Pleasant Green is kind of a thoroughfare for people taking, you know, a trip towards Home Depot and stuff. So it's going to be really good for the driveway for exiting onto Moss Trail. It'll be right on the crest of the hill. So you'd be able to see left and right before you enter into Moss Trail. So I think it's really going to add safety to that, to that one lot too. So that it's not, you know, getting into a blind corner or something. You'd be able to see cars coming from both directions. So it'll be.
Will your house, front door of the house be facing Moss Trail or Pleasant Green?
It will be facing Moss Trail, yes.
Okay. All right, open up to the board for any questions they might have.
Is there any, the existing house, any thoughts to tear it down and build another house there also?
No, the existing house is beautiful. It's, we're upgrading certain things, you know, changed our electric water heater to a gas water heater. I've met with the water department, I've met with things, we're going to, you know, we've already talked about the new water meter and some other things. So I'm kind of getting the groundwork, but that house is a beautiful house.
I noticed quite a few trees on that property. Will you be able to save many or?
Pretty much save all the trees that are, anything that's over 10 inches, eight inches, isn't going to be affected by the new house. It's the new house, there's an area that's fairly clear in front. There's only some saplings and things that are in that area. So we don't intend to take out any of the big trees, so.
Ms. Chairman. So I've been, I think it would be objectively fair to call me negative on subdividing lots after subdivision's already been created. This one, having already been two lots and wanting to go back to two lots, I don't have a problem with that idea. There was a similar situation on Alta Loma where somebody bought two lots and then put the house in the middle of them because they just didn't want to be so close to neighbors. It made some sense.
Yeah.
But to take that back to two lots, you'd have to take out the house that's on the lot line and put it back to two lots. And that's what I see here. I don't want you to tear down that house. I've been in that house. It is a nice house.
Oh, yeah.
I don't want you to tear it down. But for me to support splitting up this lot, you'd have to tear it down and put that lot line back. The lot that you're asking to create is not in alignment with the other ones around it that are fronting Moss Trail. The distance from the, you know, all those houses along Moss Trail are, what'd you say, 100 and?
The ones across the street a little bit closer, roughly 100, 110. These are in the 120 range on that.
Okay.
They do drop way back for the Hanes's old.
They do. And so in Metro Nashville, whenever you're trying to put a new house kind of in an existing area, they make you calculate the houses, I want to say it's three in each direction, just to kind of make sure you're not doing anything that's, I don't know, doesn't line up. And that's what this feels like. And the existing house faces Moss Trail. It doesn't face Pleasant Green. And so that's, it's just weird to have a house that's, again, if you tore that house, which I don't want you to do, but if you tore that house down and then you could recreate the lot that was there and put a house that actually faces Pleasant Green and then have your house on the corner and all that, that makes some sense to me. But to leave it as is and create a lot that doesn't really match what was there and it feels like forcing it. And I don't want to force it. I'm not, I could be convinced. I'm not sitting here saying I already know how I'm going to vote, but I don't, I don't like the idea of this house being 40 to 50 feet closer to Moss Trail than all the other houses that are in that alignment. And I don't like having a house facing a road that it's not, that there's a house in front of it. It's just weird to me.
Well, if I can address that, the 75 to 80 foot front setback, that could easily be moved to 100 feet. There's a level area that where, that I have ample room to the backside of the new proposed house that could easily move that back another even 40 feet because there's plenty, you can see the amount of area in the backyard.
Yeah, I think you've got 120 feet shown in the back of the property.
Yeah, and so it's easy to move because that, it kind of goes up an incline and then it levels off a ways and you've probably seen it. But so it's, I would actually like to move it back a little farther from Moss Trail because I'd like to have a nice long driveway and I'm going to make a wide enough driveway too so you can have two cars that go by. And I think it'll just, it'll be a very good presentation from Moss Trail. Now, the house, the existing house, the front of the house is, you know, it's nice and beautiful. It's got the front entry and everything, but we never use a front entry. You've probably have seen it. It's the side entry that is the most common thing to just, you know, come around to the side. So that's the way we use it and we've been there, you know, quite a bit and we love the house and we never tear it down, so.
So the question, you said so you could roughly bring back to 75 feet?
Oh, easily equal to where the other house is on the right hand side there, on the north side. In fact, it's kind of where, where things, I mean, the garage is a little towards the front and then it's a three car garage. So it actually sets back, the house sits back from the front of the garage a little bit too. But yeah, I could easily move that back. And if, you know, I would recommend myself to do that, to move it back even further. So if you have a 100 foot setback from Moss Trail, it'd be an easy thing to do.
Any other questions, comments? Mayor Tannen?
Yes, sir, thank you. Do you live in the back house now?
Yes, yeah. I live there with my three sons.
And I guess what's the, to meet your setbacks, if you come back to 120 feet, what's the setbacks off the back line, Adam?
I mean, per that one drawing, we go back to it. It shows roughly 125, 120 feet in the front, rough 75, 80 in the front, Moss Trail here. So you would switch those, say if you just increase that by 40 feet, the setback will be 80. So it's still, the rear setback minimum is like 25 feet, so it's still off, way off the minimum. So you, it put the house, what I remember roughly figuring, about 40 feet, the existing house would be about where that yard would start, where your property line, your new line would start.
Yeah, and even that south property line where we'd be moving it towards Moss Trail, there's still over 30 feet more before even the front of the existing home.
Yeah.
So we're talking about moving it out, you know, moving it at about 45 feet. But there's still, where the old lot line divided, it's about 15 feet into the house, you know, right, cuts through the house. So we'd be moving it out about 45 feet, but you'd still have 30 feet in the front of it to the lot line. And then you're going to have 100 feet now to the house itself. And then, you know, we'll have 100 feet, approximately 100 feet in the front and 100 feet in the back from the house. So the house would be in the middle. I think that'd be ideal.
So if you, if you kind of in line with the existing house, roughly be about right here versus a little further up?
Yeah.
Adam, do you know if there are other houses in that area that have front facing garages?
On the Moss Trail area? I think some of them do, yeah. You can kind of see across the street. I'm talking my head up. I know there's some, but some of them don't, I remember don't have garages. Some of them have a big carport. You can see those around it. I mean, they kind of, it's where their driveways are, so. Yeah. Like that one goes around the house, but yeah, all the 60, I didn't look, you know, on Goodlettsville Heights, there are 68 lots, I guess, in that section there, so. So only change has submitted be, the drawing showed roughly 75, 80 feet from Moss, would that be increased? Per the discussion tonight, so.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we're looking for a motion. The property owner suggested he would like to move the setback closer to the existing house. Is that correct? About 40 feet?
Yeah, we could do that, yes.
And Adam, you don't see a problem with that?
I mean, it meets that. I think Mr. Parnell was talking about consistency of the house next to, at least on that one side. The other properties, they kind of sit up on a hill at the back, but it'd be more consistent setback with the adjacent area there.
And one of the stipulations, I believe you said, is that the staff would view and approve any details?
Yeah, the subdivision plan, instead of bringing it back, I would just approve it as a staff. I can do two lot subdivision, but due to this setting, I want you all to review first, so.
So the choices are to approve with the stipulations and bring the lot back, setback additional 40 feet? We can deny or we can defer. So I'm looking for a motion. Ms. Judy Wheeler has moved for approval of item number four. Do I have a second? Second by Mayor Tannen? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Upgraded you. Okay. We have a second by Billy Barnesfield. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Mr. Parnell opposes. Motion passes. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, ready for item number five. Request residential exterior architectural plan approval for 103 residential lots on 58.66 acres on Moncreef Avenue, McCoym and Barber Drive. Does anybody here representing this request? If you come to the front and state your name and then we'll turn it over to Adam.
Good evening. I'm Tyler Deaton. I'm the land acquisition manager for MI Homes.
Chris Cox, land development manager for MI Homes.
Okay, Adam?
All right, this final master plan for Goodlettsville 56, that's what it was originally called. Might have a different name now. The planning commission approved the final master plan last November with stipulation that they bring the house plans. At the time, they didn't have the builder chosen yet. So we kind of had general provisions that go through. One, their design was going to be a recessed front loaded garage is kind of the design. Because if you all remember, some of these lots are pretty steep. And to get that to work, to meet our requirements for limited garage, we have a provision in the current ordinance where if it's a front, it's a recessed front 10 feet or more back, it's not a regulated front loaded garage for our ordinance. There's a limit if it was. But so that was how that was designed. And it generally also just to meet our design guidelines. So our, what we currently require in the ordinance, 50% brick or stone, secondary materials can be glass, split face block, EFA's type, Acusteco type, similar material, wood or cement fiber boards, vinyl and metal, or more your accents, soffits, stuff like that, that's where it's limited to that. So their proposal, let me show you one drawing first to kind of help explain it. It's based on the lots. They show, if you see these eight red lots here, I guess due to elevation or the location, they thought there's a difference on those. We'll go back. On standard lots, the goal would be to do 100% brick or stone on the front facade, accompanied by a brick or stone water table or foundation on the side of the rear. Roughly be about 31% overall in the house product, brick or stone for the whole overall house. Because the goal would be to put more on the front and less on the sides and back. And then those eight lots you showed, they agreed to 100% brick or stone on the front, first story brick or stone on the sides and brick, stone water table on the rear. So this would exceed the 50%, I guess due to the visibility of those lots, they were willing to put more on the sides. And then agree at the bottom, no vinyl next year to the home. So this would be a deviation request because we do require the 50%. Now, the planning commission's looked at, you know, if someone does 100% on the front, could, you know, maybe do 25% on the rear to offset it, you know, overall the house do the minimum 50%. They've looked at that in the past, so that's something we'd look at with that. Couple sketches they submitted, they're not color anything, but they kind of wanted to show the different levels they have, the two story homes. Are y'all proposing one story, one and a half story?
There's one or two units that are kind of a pop top in a sense, so they're one and a half stories, but there will be windows on the upstairs.
So my stipulation, building design to meet our planning to develop minimum exterior building design requirements. That is consistent with the recessed front garage design per the November 2024 final master plan approval and the minimum interior garage dimension of 22 feet. So their proposal, like I said, they're showing less than 50% on the majority of the lots, those eight lots. They said it would exceed 50%, but stipulation, the revised building plans was this board recruits, if we require consistent with the design standards, we would need to see that before issuing your permits exist. I mean, if you all approve something, a dimension, I don't think it'd need to come back. I could just confirm it before we do any permits. So your motion options would be to approve the proposed exterior design with the staff stipulations. That'd be my recommendation, or to, you could deny it or defer it. I know there's been a lot of discussion about materials. So my recommendation would just maintain our 50% requirement on all sides. Now, if there was an agreement to do more on the front, which I don't think is an issue, if you all would be comfortable with, maybe a reduced percentage on the back to offset that. But overall, the whole exterior walls will be 50% brick or stone, so.
You have anything to add to what I've just said?
Again, yes. So we view this product as a more move up product. We do think that the masonry with brick and stone is aesthetic and it's common to mix it up and we think that that provides a nice aesthetic so that it's not just one flat front. The hardy and brick being mixed up provides for something that's kind of been used as more of a common theme throughout a few different municipalities. And there's some higher end homes that use hardy for a good portion of it. With this product, we anticipated attracting, with this product, we anticipated attracting a more move up buyer. So it won't be the cookie cutter community. And we understand what Goodlettsville's trying to do with the brick and stone masonry. And we do think that when you're driving through the community, whether you're driving in or going to get your mail, we agree that that should be more brick. That's where you'll see it. And so with those featured lots, that's where we're proposing the greater than 50%. So 100% brick on the front, aside from gables that are unsupported, that would have to be hardy. First floor, the sides would be brick typically. We bring that to the bottom of the second story window trim. And then we would also have a rear water table with that. So the lots where you're driving in, you're seeing it more often, that would have brick where you're driving in. And then the more standard lots, we're proposing 100% brick on the front because we think that that's where it provides the most aesthetic appeal.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Adam, can you go back one slide? That one? What the percentages are?
I think these were just, yeah, some of them show in the gables, I guess in the hardy board or cement fiber board, what they're showing.
No, the one, the slide that actually has the 30?
Oh, that one, I'm sorry.
So the 31% is that on the sides and the back would be? So the total house itself would still be 50% brick?
The total house would be that 31%. So it'd be the front, the full front as brick and then a water table around the rear and sides for the standard lots. That's where that 31% comes from. That's just based off of a quick area analysis on the exterior of a true two story product. If that product ends up having just kind of one story on the back in that pop top scenario that I was explaining earlier, the percentage would go up inherently. And so that would be for your standard two story product, it would be 31% on the standard lots.
Instead of 50 that we normally?
That's what the requirement is, 50% on all sides. We have, like I said, we have allowance for more on the front to offset the side back.
Right, but with him putting it on the front though, we're still not meeting 50% overall.
Overall building.
Not on those standard lots, but on the featured lots, those eight, the red highlighted lots, we're proposing higher than 50%.
Right, but on 80%, we're not. Right, but on eighty percent, we're not meeting our standard.
Correct, but we are, we are proposing one hundred percent brick on the front, where most people will be looking at the house.
Mr. Chairman, Adam, will you go back to that picture again? Maybe you should explain this, the picture of your renderings that you have, to show us exactly where you're putting what.
Okay, so for, for this one specifically, you would have brick or stone all along the front where there's no doors or windows, and then on the top where you have the offset roof line with those, where the brick would go, that would be entirely brick, and then above the window on the right where that gable is, that gable would be cementitious masonry, because it would be unsupported on that unit specifically.
Okay, so then on all of them, it's generally the same thing? So are you shooting for market analysis, is that where you're coming up with hardy board versus a brick? Or are you just from a development standpoint, trying to save the money on the project?
I think the argument could be for either, but for this specifically, we think that breaking up the masonry creates a more aesthetic. When it's, when it's split up, it, in our, in our mind, it looks a lot better.
But as Mr. Barnfield said, you do understand you're not meeting our minimum fifty percent?
Yes, I do understand that.
And so you're asking for us to overrule that?
Yes, asking for a variance for it, for the standard lots versus the featured lots where we will be over the fifty percent.
Got you. I mean, can I just ask you a question hypothetically, because I'm not a builder? And you are, so what is the savings that you're figuring to save by using hardy board versus the brick and rock?
It would change per product. To do, to meet the fifty percent requirement across the board, it would be about fifteen thousand per unit in addition to what we normally plan for.
And then on that market value, are you gonna, is that gonna reflect that price?
It will, it will, that's, that's our plan. We're hoping to, to reach a market of move-up buyers, and so, so we think that we will be able to capture that.
And then last question, I guess for the moment, but what is the, what is the price point you're looking for?
Right now, we're, we're just under six hundred thousand A.S.P.
Built as is?
Yes.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And I guess everything outside of brick's gonna be hardy, I assume, no vinyl, or?
Yes, in that proposal, we're committing to no vinyl.
And on the rear elevations, which you don't show, is that correct? You only talking about a couple of feet from the foundation?
For the water table, yes, sir.
Yeah, I personally have never liked that, but that's just, that's just me. You know, it, it, you know, I've seen examples of that in other neighborhoods where the whole back end is basically vinyl or lapboard or whatever, just, I've never liked that. In the last couple of months, we've discussed that as well. As, I, I think that we should hold to the fifty percent requirement myself, you know, but that's, that's just me. But I'll leave it up to other comments from the board.
What, what is the square footage of what you're looking at here? Because that, that looks different than what I remember seeing previously.
The square footage for the homes will range from twenty-three sixty-eight to thirty-two hundred eighty-three.
Does that include the garage, or garage conditions?
That's just heated living area.
Mr. Chairman, I just, just in discussion here, but I'm like you, I agree. We have that percentage standard for a reason. And I think we've heard voices of a lot of people over the past year during the planning, speaking about more brick and less hardy and vinyl siding, so I know it's going to be a maintenance issue in about ten years on that hardy from the time that it's built. But I, I think we put our standards in place for a reason, and I think we should stick to that. Although I like the product, I voted for the development, you know, Moncreef, I think it'd be a great fit. But I think we need to come up to what we originally had talked about.
Would it make you feel more comfortable if we did one hundred percent on the featured lots on the sides as well? So one hundred percent on the front, one hundred percent on the sides with a rear water table, and then on the standard lots, we remain the current proposal?
Are you speaking just on those particular noted lots?
Yes, sir, the featured lots.
I, I think we need to do it as the, as the, the whole development as a whole.
One thing, will you finish? One thing, you know, when you consider, you know, these drawings with the front loaded garage doors, twenty-five percent of that front is taken up with the garage doors. And so you're really not talking about much brick on this front, is that correct? I say, we, we, we spent a lot of time on these design standards, and unlike Mr. Gilmore, and it's, you know, if there was a, if, if, if the situation was reversed and you had eight lots that you just couldn't see putting, for whatever reason, couldn't, you couldn't fulfill, you know, the fifty percent brick, then I would, I would, I would see that. But I can't see eighty percent going against the regulations, what we've been discussing over the last year or two. Has it been two years that we've been discussing this?
Here recently, yeah.
So, anyway, that's just my opinion, but any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I mean, what we've been talking about, we're going from fifty to seventy-five, so to change this down to thirty-one, I think that would be a big step backwards with what we're proposing new January one.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I would think that if somebody makes a motion to approve, it would be with a stipulation that based on what I've heard so far from the board, that it'd be a fifty percent requirement on brick on all sides. Or you can, you can make your motion however you want it. We can vote to approve with stipulations, or to deny or to defer. And I, I don't like deferring. I think it's sometimes a bad habit, but I'd like to see, I personally would like to see better drawings and more... You know, something we can sink our, sink our teeth in, but that's, that's up to the board. I'll leave it up to the board to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, if you, could we ask the applicant, what's his, what's his thoughts on that? I mean, is this just going to be a deal breaker if it's voted down, or are you willing to?
We're, we're willing to...
Accommodate?
We're willing to accommodate to the fifty percent for the entirety of the unit if it gets approved. So approved with that stipulation of the current standard of fifty percent.
Okay, based on that, the, and what would happen? I'm not, I'm not trying to egg on a deferral, but what would happen if we deferred it where you could show us the renderings with, with the fifty percent on all sides? Would that, how would, how would that sit with you?
I, I know for one, the developer's ready to get started on it, and I think that would prolong the initiation of the development. And so I think in the time of the essence, it's, it's probably best to move forward with the approval stipulation.
I can see, I, I don't, I don't like to defer, but all right, I'll leave it up to the board to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve, but with fifty percent brick.
Brick or stone?
Brick or stone, all sides, right?
We have a motion to approve with the stipulation that all units would be fifty percent brick or stone on all sides, minimum. Yes, sir. We have a motion to approve with those stipulations, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Gilmore. Any further questions or comments? Those in favor for approval with those stipulations, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
I can just lay that microphone up on the...
All right, ready for item number six? The community, the community development staff request recommendation to the Gilson City Commission to amend the zoning ordinance section to define an additional permitted commercial use car wash within the interchange overlay district. Is there anybody here to represent this request? If you'll come and state your name and...
Steve McClure.
Okay, Steve. We're going to turn this over to Adam, and we'll get right back to you.
All right, the gentleman came in asking about the outlot in front of the QuickTrip. If y'all know that lot, we talked about that several times on Highway Thirty, Louisville Highway Thirty-One, about a car wash. This car wash proposal, I think it's automated and manual, it's got a little bit of both, but I think it, over time, can become automated. I explained to him, in the current overlay, and we do have an I sixty-five exit ninety-eight specific overlay, we don't allow auto car washes, so the request tonight would be to include car washes in that. The planning commission last fall approved a recommendation to City Commission to include auto services, like express leave, oil change places. When we went to City Commission, that was removed. So I think the City Commission decided not to include auto services, so this proposal would be just to include the car wash use. And this is exit ninety-eight interchange only, if this was recommended for approval. There was some photo, I'm sorry, there was some photos presented. Here's a site plan of the proposed layout here, here's QuickTrip, the gas canopies. So it would use QuickTrip's driveways in and out, different design, of course, you'd have to meet our design guidelines, and we talked about that. But tonight's just about the ordinance itself, so the motion options would be, one, recommend approval to the City Commission to incorporate the car washes in the exit ninety-eight interchange. Of course, it wouldn't apply just to QuickTrip, it would apply to anything within an overchange. But that overchange goes from Forks to Louisville Highway at just, I can't remember the name of the road off to the right there, but it's just right up exit ninety-eight. Roughly, this was one of the last slots in it on this, long drive, long drive. Our two, recommendation denial to City Commission and leave the overlay as it is and not include car washes, or we could defer it. This would be a recommendation to City Commission to approve or deny.
Have you anything to add to that?
He, he pretty much summed it up. It's, we're not going, we're averaging, hopefully to average one hundred and seventy-five to two hundred cars a day, but it will enter and exit through the QuickTrip and not over the Louisville Highway. The facades will be all exterior, be brick, standing seam metal roof. It's two in-bays, which mean touchless, and then two self-serve's that will eventually become touchless as well.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Is this basically just self-serve and no, no employees on site?
There'll have to be one. It's two touchless, you pull in the bay, it's called an in-bay, you pull in, you just put it park, and the car wash goes around the car. And then the other two will be self-serve, like call it quarter car wash, but the dimensions will still be built to where we can make those touchless come time when it's profitable to do so.
And Adam, this change does not affect the Long Hallapike overlay at all?
No, we have one specific for exit ninety-eight. So, yeah, the goal was for it just to remain on the exit ninety-eight.
Okay. And seems like a good use to me. I would... I don't know, there's a part of me wishes there was some more restaurants kind of through that area, but it's going to be a hard sell, it's probably been a very hard sell for them. They're probably struggling to find somebody to use this land, and this is a, a good fit with the QuickTrip, so. I don't, I don't see an issue with it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Hey, Adam, in front of the QuickTrip, the green, is that trees shrub that they added right in there?
Yeah.
And there's nothing in front of proposed, are you planning on?
Yes, sir, this was just a, a quick site plan, we have not hit the engineering phase, because we don't want to take it to the next level.
Something to match QuickTrip and...
Yes, it'll be all brick, it'll have landscape. And one more thing, with, with this being a QuickTrip surplus lot, they had all the restrictions. Can't do coffee shops, can't, any, because they sell food, and they weren't going to allow anything in this lot. And they do the tunnel car washes, but that lot's not indicative for a tunnel. It's the only reason they even entertained our offer of buying the lot to put a car wash in.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, so Mr. McClure, so ideally, that lot's too small to do anything of the practicality that we would want to have there.
If it was inducent for a tunnel, QuickTrip would have already put a tunnel in.
Catch.
Because they do tunnels on their, in their cells.
Well, I guess we'll be looking for a motion to approve... I'm sorry, okay. Thank you.
And what, what about vacuum cleaners? Will it have self-serve vacuums, or are they for pay?
It'll have self-serve vacuums right along the back. And they'll have little canopies over them, have a little bend for microfibers. And it'll be a token distribution for the people that go through the touchless, and then you'll have to pay if you just go through the...
Okay.
Through the quarter, through the side.
Give us just a second.
Will it be any self spraying ones as well?
There'll be two self on one end, and then two touchless. And our goal is, the bays will all be the same size, so we can add touchless down the road. But what we were kind of looking at on this was, you know, the guys that work fifty hours a week, because there's a bunch of them that travel up and down that road, these touchless car wash bays, you can do a Mercedes in them, but you can also do a dooley or a flatbed or a work van with ladders. And, and it's really... And it's really top-notch, but there'll always be self-serve at least one, because the guy that pulls in with muddy floor mats and wants to rinse his truck off extra before he tries to get it washed.
No further questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
So we'll be looking for a motion to approve or deny. I'll leave it up to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve this car wash. Any stipulations to that? No? Okay, with no stipulations. Second by Mr. Parnell. Any further questions or comments? Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion's approved. Thank you very much. All right, we are ready for item number seven. Request, community development staff request recommendation to City, Goodwill City Commission to amend zoning ordinance section fourteen dash two oh eight. Requirements of home occupations to define provision for limited onsite client patron services. Anybody here for this? Okay, state your name, please.
Alejandra Tyler.
Thank you.
All right, we received a request regarding our home occupations. Currently, right now, in our home occupation, we've got several regulations. One, the residents of the property itself, and I'm more than twenty-five percent of the home, traffic generated typical from a neighborhood, no noise or lights or anything from the home occupation. Different than, no commercial vehicles, storage vehicles, no outside alteration to the house to make it look like it's part of the business. And then also, it defines, following, there's defined specifically prohibited home occupation. One would be repair of motor vehicles. And two, currently, we have a provision, a barber or beauty shop, or any similar activity for clientele or patrons are served on the premises. So the proposal is to be able to do up to three clientele a day, and no more than one at a time. So it would allow small-scale, limited clientele coming to your home. So that's what the amendment proposal's for. I looked at some other cities. A lot of cities have regulations on no more than one at a time. Some cities define like hours of operation from seven thirty, eight, up to, you know, metros involve multiple sections. But other cities allow something similar to this. And some cities have a minor home occupation and a major home occupation. The major includes more by client and serve. So this proposal would be to allow up to three clients a day, no more than one client at a time. So the goal was to be consistent with traffic in a neighborhood per the other provisions of the ordinance. Motion options, recommend approval to the City Commission to amend, defer, or deny. I feel like in dealing with home occupations, we get a lot of these questions for, like, a home real estate business, where they wanna have someone come in, show a property, but these are more on the smaller scale. These are not businesses typically that are big enough to justify paying rent, a big facility, or building a facility. So it's more of like a little small business incubator kind of deal. But other cities do kind of allow similar deals, but I think the key is there's no more than one at a time, like a salon. I guess the key would be our spa, not to have two people having stuff done, and another one coming in and driving. I think that could get out of hand in a neighborhood, but if you do more than three over an eight to ten-hour period, no more than one at a time, it's really not inconsistent with the traffic provisions of other sections of ordinance. So that's really what it's about.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I think this opens up, we already have some places that do business, people coming in and out, and it's an issue where they come to the city complaining about the traffic and enforcement of that. So I would just say that to take that under consideration.
Can I piggyback on that? I think enforcement is kind of the, one of the big issues here. So who, who currently does enforce? Is this?
We handle any kind of, because this is a zoning ordinance, it'd be a zoning ordinance violation. Oh, home occupations, probably one every couple of weeks. We deal with different reasons. There's more about employees and commercial vehicles, but.
Okay, but I mean, but we don't have anybody sitting out, driving around, staring at this person's house, seeing how many people show up. So I guess it's a, if a neighbor complains type of situation.
That's typically how we know about them, but yeah. But people will call, like this lady did, will call and ask, can I do this? I'd give them the ordinance, like, I can't say you can, because.
Yeah.
Does this happen, and we don't know about it? I'm sure that there's instances of this, but yeah, per ordinance.
Okay. Okay, so then, whoever can answer this question? So if we have somebody complain, and then we, I guess, do some type of investigation to see what the problem is, and then if we decide there is a problem, have we succeeded in the past in squashing the problem? Or is it, or is it just?
We've had different home occupations. A lot of it's more that we dealt with is about equipment. We've had several more about retail services. But I mean, we go through the process, but I mean, as you can imagine, it never meant a home occupation violations. I mean, this, this section, I don't know if it'd make it more complicated, but I mean.
Well, what I don't wanna see is, is somebody complain because there is an issue, and then now we're spending taxpayer dollars to hire attorneys and go to court and try to stop this thing from happening. And even if we have the laws on the books, it just feels like, I don't know. Part of me likes the idea of allowing people to get started in their careers. I don't wanna, I don't wanna put barriers in the path of somebody, and there's, there are people who need to work from home, and this is an opportunity for them to do it. And I don't wanna stop people from doing things just because there could be potential bad actors stopping the people that would do this responsibly. I don't wanna necessarily put a barrier in their path. I guess I just wanted to know how it had happened, and, you know, what obstacles we've actually faced in the past.
Home occupations are not easy to deal with, you are correct, but that's any of our current ordinance, so.
Mr. Chairman, Adam, so this would basically open it up for any kind of business?
Were you, anytime where people come, like an office-type attorney? What do you call that, where you notarize? I mean, you could have all kinds of things like that, service-based out of the house. Small hair salon.
Hair cutting, massages. Pretty limitless.
Yeah, what we're limited by is to make sure it's only people that live there, that are, you know, not bringing in a bunch of employees. Not create a bunch of noise, a lot of traffic. That's what the parameters we have now, but we do have that clause that no clients can be served on-site, so. This would allow limited service to clients, so.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll just add, because we went through a three or four-year span in which it wasn't necessarily the business, it was the interpretation of people coming and going from the neighbors that really created a lot of, a lot of hard work on staff because of that. And I won't get into all the details, but they really felt like they bought a house in a residential neighborhood and felt like that was being invaded upon in that specific situation.
Obviously, this is gonna create a lot more work for you guys if we approve this, correct, Adam? I mean, home occupations are all the time. Like this lady that came in and asked, I mean, people like that use it in our problem. People just do what they're gonna do, and then we get complaints. That's ninety-five percent of our problem. I mean, it's, I'm not saying this, what they're wanting to do doesn't already happen. It's just, when they call and ask, it's what we have to do. Yeah, I mean, any regulation we add adds more possible enforcement. I don't know how this, I mean, on my mind, I don't see how this would create any more, because we're already dealing with home occupations so much now. They're not easy to enforce. I mean, it's correct, because, you know, they're usually nowhere close to like a real business is. Like on Long Hall Pike, the traffic's usually nowhere, you're talking usually like five or six people a day, and maybe there was two cars at once. So the perspective, it's just, you know, like Tim said, a residence, or area people wanna have a residence, and I guess that's the key, to try to do regulations, prevent it, and we just do our regulation, our enforcement if we have issues, so. But it does say the city's willing to let this happen. If we feel like it's opening an issue we don't want, that's a different reason not to approve it. But it's not inconsistent with other cities' regulations either, so.
I would assume, of course, I guess the city doesn't have access to every single HOA document in the city, but I would assume most subdivisions that have an HOA probably have some limit on this anyway, in their HOA docs. Like, you can't run a business in their, in their HOA. I would assume Windridge does, but I don't know that, but I would assume they do. So I think we're probably talking about areas that don't have an HOA as even being an option here. And most of those have a little bit larger lots. I can read between the lines and what was said, and assume, okay, a neighbor sees people coming and going from their next-door neighbor, and assume there's a drug house next door and freaking out. But the reality is, there's, most of the time, something legitimate happening over there, and people are getting things they need in the community, which is a good thing. So I don't know if there's a way for us to, I think it's interesting that you say it really isn't creating additional work, because we're battling it one way or the other. And maybe if we, if we offered, you know, if somebody called and complained, and we said, we have a code on the books that says they're allowed this many people, let us know if there's a problem beyond that. Maybe that would actually help you, at least have something to say in response. I don't know, maybe we could, we could do it, something with the zoning code, so if it's, it's on a R fifteen or larger lot, maybe. Because these smaller neighborhoods are gonna be a problem. If there's people in the parking on the street and in the driveway all over the place, I can't imagine that would, that would work. But again, those are probably HOA subdivisions anyway. So I don't know, I kind of want, I, you know, I'm, I'm looking at this human being standing here in front of us who simply wants to, I guess, cut some hair and style some hair, no, what's the?
A makeup artist and facialist.
Okay, okay.
So if it helps you to make a decision, it's, like, our driveway can fit, like, I think, four cars, and we wouldn't have that many clients, like, coming in and out, you know? It's, it's a very small business, like Adam said, it's, you know, I just wanna be with my daughter, so.
Right, which makes perfect sense.
Yeah.
So are you in a subdivision?
Yes.
Have you checked the HOA?
No, to be honest with you, I haven't.
Okay.
I guess, I guess I look at this a little bit different. You know, we have a number of businesses that were up and down Long Hall of Pike and other places, barber shops, that were paying, you know, taxes, they're paying, you know, substantial rent. And I think when things, maybe not this particular instance, but in other things, it, it kind of hurts the business owners who are, who are there, you know, it's hard to compete. That's the reason I don't like firecracker stands. I don't like, I don't like these landscape pop-ups. It takes away from Ace Hardware, it takes away from other places who are doing it right. That's just my opinion.
Well, just to add in, I'm moving from a studio space into my home. It's still a small business, but I have all the licensing that I need. That required me to go through the city of Davidson, or the county of Davidson. So I had to get all of the permits, all of the licensing. So what I'm trying to do now is do it the right way, and come to the city and ask, you know, if I can move it to the home. Simply because I have my daughter, she's three months old, and I just, it's a little bit harder than what I expected it to be, so that's why I'm moving from the studio into my home. But if the decision is no today, then we'll make it work. But I pay rent, I do all of that currently. But, yeah.
Any further questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, yes, sir, I have a question, not from this young lady, more I guess for Adam, his staff. Item five about no sales on the premises. I'm thinking particularly about places like hair salons, or nail salons, or whatever, where often if a, if a client wants to go in, and, and let's say the client has snow-white hair. I don't know anybody like that, but, you know, and they wanna buy a particular shampoo. This says they can't buy that shampoo there, even though that may be what the service provider uses. They would have to go elsewhere. Do you likewise get questions about that, about the issue of sales?
No, I mean, I guess where it hadn't really been a problem so far, per the ordinance, I could say that, is if they can't be serving clients anyways, I mean, that, I think that's in there where it can't be like a store, where people come in and just like, can't be running a shop out of there, like a guitar shop or a gun store. We've had several gun license in neighborhoods, but they do everything off-site. I think that's the difference, if people are coming in to buy stuff, getting a lot of shipments there, you know, all the time for restocking supplies. But it's never really been an issue, because we don't allow any kind of service on the site itself. But yeah, I see what you're saying, would that be, it'd be very limited, but it is something.
Well, to me, it's one more thing for you to have to monitor, depending on, depending on what their service is, and I wondered if that had ever been a problem for you.
I've never had that issue pop up for sales. We've had the service kind of stuff, but never really sales. Most of the time, they involve vehicles, multiple vehicles on the site, employees, that's a lot of time.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would just, I guess I would say that over probably two years ago, we kind of went through this. This is not apples and apples, it's apples and oranges, but we kind of went through this with the Airbnbs in the residential neighborhoods. And I can remember my neighbor running an Airbnb, and people hanging out in the street. Not that they're gonna do that at your establishment, but other people said, oh, well, we don't allow that to happen. So it's okay for us to have that in our neighborhood. And that was an issue for the codes department to enforce, and I'm sure Mr. Freeman and Judge Toll. And I think this may be opening a big envelope here for other businesses.
If there's no further questions or comments, I'll be looking for a motion on this item. If, to approve or to deny, or to defer, so we can get more information, I guess. So I'll leave this up to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Barnesfield. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor of denying this request, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Aye. Opposed?
No.
No. Mr. Parnell says no. I'm sorry, ma'am, if it, if we were assured it was just you and nobody else, this would be a different, different situation, I believe, and I wish you well. Thank you. We're down to discussion items. Long Hollow Pike, Willis Branch Road, horse stables, events, conceptual proposal. Anybody here for this agenda?
My name is Tanya Long.
Thank you. We're gonna turn this over to Adam, and we, we discussed this some last month, so, Adam?
All right. The proposal is to do, uh, you know, there's two properties here, well over twenty acres, to do, keep the two houses. There's always been horses on the property, but do like a stable, a, a commercial-type setting of a stable, and possibly event centers. Right now, this property's on to R-40, of course, that would not be permitted, so we'd have to create a conditional use, a process, and zoning ordinance to allow this type of use. You're not saying we're zoning anything out here for commercials, I, I think it would be keeping it as a residential kind of use. We've looked at similar items before out of Long Hollow Pike, uh, some similar deals, but that's what the proposal is, kinda selling off the existing, uh, stable features of the property, and, you know, we're at the setting of it, of course, it's a great setting for something like this, but I just wanted to talk about it first. If you all feel comfortable with it, I know we're not voting on anything tonight, then we have to pair it with zoning ordinance to bring forward, but I think that was just for discussion. The proposal, it sounds like it'd be first-class, but it would be a, you know, provision, I don't know if, how we feel comfortable with that going forward, but that's what this discussion's for, so.
Okay. Yeah, have you seen to head, ma'am?
Right now, I have a property on Long Hollow Pike, I've been there for about twenty-three years, so I have a photography studio. And I do small events there, I do like dinners in the creek, I do small weddings and, and, uh, birthday parties and things like that. So, this property is just a lot larger, and it already has the, the stables and things there. I would like to bring my horses, which we are, um, boarding, we'd like to bring those there, and my daughter teaches like riding lessons and, um, things like that, so I would like to bring that there, um, so we could board a few horses, not a lot of horses, but that. And I would like to continue doing, it has a creek on the property, I'd like to continue doing, uh, like dinners in the creek. I'm part of the Junior Service League of Hendersonville, and we do some of our small events there, nothing really large. There's a second house on the property that I would want to use for the small events. And mainly, it's, it's got a riding arena, I would like to, you know, do a lot of equestrian kind of things there. And then continue doing photography, which I know I would need to, I'm in the county now, so I would need to have that rezoned, to do my business there.
Questions from the board?
I assume you're gonna live on this property as well, or?
Yes. Yeah, I would live in one of the houses and then use the other one for, like, any kind of event that we did.
Mr. Chairman, Adam, is there a way, if we do go forward with this, to limit, um, event sizes and times and everything?
Yes. I, I definitely, this would be one of those issues, and as I'm, I'd want to do a conditional use, where it would be through the Board of Zoning Appeals. One, through, just for the public process, that people would, would have a chance to know about it. I may not necessarily agree, but they would have a chance to know about it, there'd be a public board versus just approving it and then finding out about it. But, yes, it would be, we'd have to, I presume that would be something we'd discuss in an ordinance amendment, like the limited size.
Do you have thoughts of the sizes that you're looking at currently? I know, I've seen some of your pictures from the dinners in the creeks and stuff, it's pretty cool, uh, events that she puts on.
Yeah. Um, right now, it, I would say that the, the house that, the second house that's there is just a little over two thousand square feet, so we're probably limited to fifty people there for now. I mean, you know, future, I don't know, I mean, if it's something that, that does well. The barn, I would like to use that for small weddings, which is what I do now, uh, at my photography studio. And it would hold more, but I would say maybe a hundred people, you know, nothing really crazy. The good thing about the property is, it has, the, the driveway comes from Long Hollow, but it's, it has, um, like, an access, you know, to get off of the road, to turn in, and then it's wide enough for two cars, and it splits, and it goes all the way back to the barn, so we could do parking kind of behind the barn, you know, where nothing is visible from the road, so it wouldn't change the aesthetics, you know, and I would be living in the front house, so the front, anything facing Long Hollow would still remain the same. Anything that we did would be towards the back of the property.
Now, you say this is zoned R-40 now?
It is, that's correct.
And, and what would the zoning be?
It'd be R-40, we just have a special condition.
And I think the second lot is zoned agricultural, so it's kind of the larger lot.
The bigger lot. It's got agricultural use on it, yeah.
Yeah.
But, I mean, in the residential neighborhoods, you can do schools and churches, and kinda similar along that deal. There are special events, depending on where it's at, where they could do more, you know, more, higher traffic counts and stuff, but.
Was there a, um, recently, was there not a, uh, request on Willis Branch for something similar to this?
I don't know about Willis Branch, I know we have one out Long Hollow Pike, it was gonna be kind of a, an event center.
I thought it was across from Copper Creek.
Yeah, and in front of it, in front of it there, yeah.
Is that, that's Allen Grove, that's not Willis, that's Allen, okay. And, and that was, was that denied, or?
It's similar, I mean, it was a little bit different request, but kinda similar. But this, I guess, this is the setting where it's at, with the horse stables already there.
It has a horse stables with eight stalls, it's got a, a riding arena, so we could, you know, bring a few horses in and board and, and do, my daughter does pony camps and riding lessons and things for someone else, and for another, um, equestrian stable. And so, we'd like to bring that, you know, do that initially, and, and then do, you know, the small events. I would definitely wanna do my photography there, and then some dinners and, um, some workshops. I, I, I'm on a speaking tour for photography, so I'd like to do some photography workshops, and art workshops, and, you know, women's retreats, things like that.
Mr. Chairman, Adam, was, uh, the Raimy Phillips event place, is that in the city or just outside?
Where's that at?
It was up on Willis, Willis Branch.
It's out of the city. Willis Branch, we just got Mr. Patel's property in the entrance into, um, Terra there.
Okay.
So, yeah, that would be in the county.
Mr. Chairman, um, a couple of questions, if I might. Since I live in the neighborhood, uh, I have been asked from, from neighbors of mine as well about size of the equestrian events that you might be proposing, whether there will be lighting provided, what, what time of the day or night are you proposing these events might take place? Uh, I've been asked about alcohol, and, and how accessible that will be, if, if there will be, that will be provided, or be sold, or whatever. The other idea of, excuse me, other kinds of concessions, that sort of thing, what the long-range thinking might be.
Right. Uh, right now, um, what, what she does is, you know, basic lessons, so those are, I mean, the latest ones are usually around seven or eight o'clock. You know, it's usually for children, and so, um, she does, um, pony camps, which those are usually like seven AM to noon. They're, they're morning camps, and it's, you know, fall break, spring break, it's summer, so those are all morning. Any kind of event that we would do there would be no later than eight or nine, you know, PM at night. It wouldn't be anything where people stay, and, and no alcohol involved, 'cause usually it's children. She does do some, uh, like, training, like, workshop kind of things, but those, again, those are just, it's daylight. There, there is lighting there already, there's like, um, there's like a slab, a concrete slab where they have, um, done concessions, I think, in the past, 'cause they used to have events there a lot, I guess, years ago is what they told me. So, we have lighting and things like that, but usually anything that has to do with horses, they're ready to put the horses up by dark, and, you know. Um, as far as like events, if I did a, a wedding, I've only done weddings like on weekends that were during the day. If I did something at night, I know, you know, we'd have to be done, you know, quiet by, I think it's nine, or whatever the ordinance is, you know. And then I wouldn't be providing, as far as like you're asking about alcohol, um, I really haven't checked to see, like, it would be, you know, the people having caterers and things like that, I wouldn't be catering anything, or, you know, providing any of that stuff myself, so that I would have to look into more, I'm not sure what the rules are on anything like that, but the main thing for me is making sure that it's not loud, and we're not, you know, bothering any of the neighbors, you know.
And that's one, two things that I would encourage you to check from a due diligence standpoint, is, the beer sales, or beer in general, would go through the city of Guelph, anything else would go through the state of Tennessee. You probably know this, if I'm, if I'm preaching to the choir, I'm sorry. And the other, um, there's nothing that you said, it's made me think about that, I'm just thinking about things that have happened in the past. You know, right now, short-term rentals, as far as Airbnb, VRBO, is not permitted, um, in that zoning, so that would be something else that, that might, would impact your decision. I'm just wanting to share that with you, not, not, just so that you have all the information.
So, are you wanting to buy this property, or do you own this property?
No, I'm interested in purchasing.
We have, uh, we heard from one resident last month that was not for this. I was, I'd be curious to how majority of people that live in that area would feel about it. You know, I, I, I don't have a, I guess I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other. I can see the big use of property, I can see, you know, having riding lessons, and I think, you know, but...
It's a beautiful property.
Yeah, and I know the property, and it's, um, but, so this is a discussion item. What, what'd be the next step?
It requires an ordinance amendment, coming back from this board, but, you know, really just for y'all's discussion, for her to get a feel, don't really feel like it's gonna go anywhere, you know, kinda think about other things, you know, think about her ideas for it, or I could bring it up. We've got a huge agenda coming in December, so probably, uh, upcoming Plan Commission, but you'd have to recommend something to the City Commission, but... Tonight was just for y'all's discussion, if you feel like it's a good idea or a bad idea, I think.
You might wanna venture what their, um, what their thoughts are as far as whether this is a good use or not?
Yes, sir.
I figured you would.
So, things don't happen in a vacuum, and oftentimes, we're looking at, at things that are being proposed, and it may or may not be what we wanted, but the alternative that could happen in its place is worse, and we have to kind of weigh that a little bit. I'm looking at this property, and I would like to see this property at least look similar to the way it does today, way off into the future. And it, it kind of reminds me of, of Maybel Carter's property in Madison, that has been turned into a very similar venue, and that has helped that property be preserved the way it was for a very long time. And that would be something that I would want to hear from you, is that part of this process is not to turn this into some crazy commercial property, but to keep it the way it is, and utilize it so that other people can enjoy it the way that the homeowners have for decades, and actually, other people get to be on that property some and, and enjoy it. I think that's a positive, a net positive, because the, the potential that that property has to be something else entirely, that I know nobody around there wants it to be, um, that, that would be, that would be hard to see take place. And, and it has potential to do that. So, to have somebody come in here and say, "No, that's not what I wanna do, I want to keep it the way it is, just utilize it to its potential", I, I think that's a phenomenally good situation. So, I, I think you're in that, where I'm situated in this thing, um, but I would want more detail and more information, and kind of a commitment to that.
Right. Um, I've spoken in great detail with the owners, and they've been pretty excited about, "That's exactly what I wanna do." I've lived on Long Hollow Pike for twenty-three years, and I have a, a barn that I have, it's about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty years old, that I just keep, you know, trying to keep the aesthetic exactly the same, the creek and everything. Since I have been there, everything has stayed the same, because it's just so beautiful, and it's a part of history, especially this property, and it has a really cool graveyard that's on it, that's, you know, from, I guess, the Revolutionary War, whatever. And that is my intention, is just to keep it the way it is, because it's, it's beautiful, um, and everything that I plan to do it, that as a photographer, I just use the natural resources, you know, everything is gonna be the same, other than, and even if we end up, you know, we'll have to do some repairs, you know, it's old, we're gonna have to replace a lot of fencing and do a lot of repairs and things, even on the barn, but my goal is to keep it, I love it the way it is, and as a photographer, the aesthetic is what makes it interesting, and that's what sells my work, is that I just, it, it doesn't look like a new building, it's, you know, it's old and historical, and people love that. And so, that is my intent, just to keep it the way it is, and even if we have to do repairs or build on to a building, it's gonna be with the same aesthetic, so.
Any other comments? So, what's her next step?
I guess, now, based on discussion, I'd, I'd like to see if she feels like she wanna go forward with amendment request, or... This, this board will be the one to recommend to a City Commission.
If this is a, uh, amendment to the zoning, it would have to go before the City Commission, had to have a, a public hearing, and of course, you know, if it comes before the Plan and Zoning Board, you know, whenever, there'll be public comments, you know, might have a lot of neighbors to voice their approval or disapproval of it. We always take that into consideration, we know we listen to everybody, so, um, you know, I, I would, I would say the ball's in your court as to whether you wanna proceed or not.
I would like to.
Okay, well, I would get with Adam and put it on the agenda, and then we'll see what happens. And, uh, I, um, and I wish you well. I don't know how I would vote, it sounds like a, a novel idea, but I don't, I'm not gonna tell you, I'm gonna, I'm all for it, 'cause
Right.
I'm really not all for it. I'm halfway.
I understand.
I'm halfway for it, okay, there you go.
It's my job to convince you.
I'm, I'm very wishy-washy.
Not for a zoning ordinance amendment, 'cause it's not just for that property, I mean, anybody can request a zoning ordinance amendment, 'cause it would apply in similar situations. No, it, it would apply, I mean... We'd have to set up a, a zoning ordinance amendment, it would be a review by the Board of Zoning Appeals, but if someone had, you know, the goal would be more than put them on main highways, you don't wanna put them on small roads, and that, that's gonna knock out most of our large-acre tracks that are residential. But it wouldn't just for this property, it could be similar circumstances, it would be approved, could be reviewed for similar ones. So, that's why it don't have to be, it's not like we're rezoning this property, which would require the owner to make that request.
So, we would be asked to revise the zoning code to allow this in certain circumstances.
Yes.
Then, and that would be, if it, if we said yes, that would then be our recommendation to City Council.
Correct.
Then go to City Council, and they would have to approve that zoning change.
Then go to city council and they would have to approve that zoning change. Then it would have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for them to actually give the special use permit.
That's exactly right. Yeah, yeah, because the BCA's approvals don't run with the land, they run with the, it can, it can end, you know, it would end with the current owner, so, yeah. Just kind of like similar to what we're talking about doing with agricultural sales. Remember, we talked about doing that in the R40? It was similar, if it had to been a zoning ordinance amendment for conditional use, but it starts here.
So in that use, if she bought it and did this and then stopped, would the zoning go forward or would it stop as well?
Her use would stop, because it's a permit what they're issuing. It's, it's different, I know that's totally different, what we do, everything we do up here runs with property and zoning regulations and zoning maps, but the Board of Zoning Appeals, conditional use. And it is tricky, like say churches are the same way, if a church builds a facility in a residential district, it'd be hard for the city to deny a different church just to come in and switch out. So I think that would be the thing, but it is all about their proposal and their proposed limitations. Like if, say this was approved for no more than 100 people and the next person, say 30 years from now wants to do it and do 300, it would not.
You got it all?
I think so.
All right.
So it would basically be a permit, it wouldn't actually rezone the property, it'd just be a permit for me to use it for that purpose.
Yeah, because I don't see us zoning anything out there commercial on that, I think that'd be.
But that would encompass like the, the eventing and the photography, like I could do, but, okay.
Okay.
I'm, I would set it up, what I'll propose, something tied to acreage of property. That's kind of what it, not really agricultural use, but it kind of is, but, but really, it's all about the property being the feature that they're promoting, so. I'll bring it to y'all.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
We'll see you in the future.
Okay.
All right, what else we got, Adam?
That's it, December 1st, the next meeting, we'll be able to review the larger agenda. We will be reviewing the comprehensive plan amendment process. It's a, by law, it's a 30-day public notice, I had to advertise it almost a month ago. So we'll have that ready, like I said, it is a pretty lengthy agenda coming up. And also, the Tennessee Planning Association had their fall conference and they had several sessions. They're going, they're recorded, and they're going to offer for training. I attended some of them, I think they'll be interesting to listen to. So like we have the last couple of years, we'll have that online for y'all to do through the Tennessee Planning Association, good variety of stuff. So I'll send it to you when that comes open, where you can watch it, so.
And we have other things on December agenda besides the?
Oh yeah, it's a big one, it's like it's the end of the year, everything kind of.
Is it going to be one of these midnight meetings?
I don't think so, there, several items will be consent agenda items, we haven't had those in a while, but it's just a lot of things, unfortunately, you know, the way it works, sometimes we just get a lot of requests in for odd stuff. I call it all at once, so.
All right, thank you very much.
Chairman, if I can make one comment?
Yes, sir.
I was asked, this is not city-sponsored by all means, but I was asked by some Loretta Drive residents to make an announcement that TDOT is going to be having a meeting at Cavalry Church on Willis Branch concerning the TDOT project going on, and that's going to be November 6th at 3:30. And that's open, that's open to anyone.
Very good.
Yes, correct, yes sir, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you for your tight, kind attention, thank you for those in the audience, have a good day.